...stands one nation under God indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Al.
Here.
Mr. Beistock.
Here.
Mr. Carson.
Here.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Crowe.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Citizens' comments?
Hi, are we on? We're good, okay. I'm Jan Kiefer, 628 Homestead Avenue. For a lot of years, I've come up to the public comment period to point out the detrimental effects of student health as they're attending school here at Southmoreland. Fifteen months ago, roughly sixteen, it could be more, you guys up there told me we're going to have a health committee that would be formed, and I think that was actually mandated. I'm not sure about that part, but we have had one brief meeting with nothing scheduled. And over the years, I've come to this podium with statistics on children's health that seem to have gone on deaf ears. I brought other people to the podium to echo my remarks. I understand that most people don't really care enough about their health and see it the way I do, to do the study and make the changes that I have and people that I associate with have. But as, here's the point, guys, but as guardians and parents, teachers, and administrators, you don't have the right to willful ignorance and hiding under government policy to impose your, these destruct, not yours, but these destructive policies and behaviors on a minor. You can do that for yourself, you can do that for your wife, you know, all my friends really aren't really health-conscious, to be honest with you, but I think that children should not be subjected to that. So, to make that point, unlike women's rights of the '60s, age discrimination really has not come a long way, baby. I see a day when children's rights are not limited to child labor laws and not corporal abuse. That's basically where we are, we're sort of in the Middle Ages, and I see some day soon when the physical, mental, and spiritual health of the child and his adults will be seen one is not separate, and that should really apply to public education policy. And I see a day when following the facts is not going to be more important than just being in the majority and being undercover. Like, when you get hit with facts, you gotta stop and look at them. So, again, I've been up here time and again, it's been many years, and I believe that in my lifetime, we'll see the treatment of our youth as we're doing it today as a subtle form of human bondage. That's why we did all these other rights, the women's rights, the gender rights, all these other rights, you don't see them when you're there, but we look back and it's 2020. So, final sentence then is parental rights need to be modernized, and the institution of public education is the place to start. Thanks.
School Board vacancy? Four candidates in order.
Okay, that will be Mr. Kiefer.
Are you going to make your decision?
She's going to read the people who are applying. The secretary's going to read the persons in the order in which they have submitted their vacancy.
... Okay, by the solicitor, the first person to turn in there, vacancy for school board was Mr. Jan Kiefer, second was Mr. William Porter, and third was Mr. Jack McLeod.
Okay, I have reviewed the materials that were submitted. Each of the persons did submit what is called a statement of financial interest, which I did review, and a letter indicating that they were applying for the school board vacancy. Two of the persons submitted more detailed information about their qualifications and background. I just wanted to point out that there was an error on Mr. McLeod's statement of financial interest in that I believe that he had checked off that he was submitting it as a quote "candidate", close quote. The correct terminology would have been nominee. A candidate is someone who runs in the election, whether it's the primary coming up in the spring or in the fall. However, I do not think it would be appropriate for me to rule as a matter of law that that was inadequate for the purposes here tonight, for two reasons. Number one, that was submitted in December, at which point you could not even be yet a candidate, because the time for taking out nomination papers doesn't fall until after the turn of the year. Secondly, he obviously did indicate in his submission that he was applying for the school board vacancy, and I think it was an error that should not disqualify them from being a potential nominee. So, I'm not going to rule as a matter of law that he's disqualified, but I just wanted everybody to know that I did pay attention to that, and it's kind of like a point of learning that there's a distinction between being a nominee for an office and being a candidate. And so, when those forms are done, you have to pay attention to those. So, I believe that the president now can have each of the persons who is seeking the vacancy to come forward in the order in which Mrs. Tarrison announced them, and they can speak for up to five minutes, as per the rules that you've already agreed to.
Particularly invite Mr. Kiefer up for his five minutes.
Okay, thanks and good evening. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Benz, who stepped down. Originally, he stepped forward, he gave away his time, he took home the stress and the serving in an imperfect system and found fulfillment in what he did, and I wish him the best for that, and I think all public volunteers need to be acknowledged for that. So Aristotle, he said, "Give me a child until he's seven, and I will show you the man." My general thesis is along this line, then. It's at Aristotle's age seven when public education picks up the development in a positive environment, a child will, a child will innately explore and enjoy learning. So, public education largely is getting out of the way and letting the child go, and also, public education's about undoing the negative conditioning of Aristotle's first seven years by showing the child how to think for himself, herself. This is, this is what I call learning, questioning every major presumption underlying his young belief system. The skill of critical thinking is best learned in the elementary grades. The second half of my thesis, then, is that public education is free to all children, and this should level the playing field between the haves and the have-nots. Public education should not find its completion in readiness for the workforce or higher education. It is not a workforce prep institution, and a graduate should be ready to be a good citizen and a self-loving person. Today's public education does not produce critical thinkers, but powerless obedience. Arts, music, and humanities, which expands the mind, has been traded for testing. In presentation, in preparation for this presentation, I did my homework. I didn't go into grapevine or play politics anymore, I just stand on my ideas and stand alone if it so be that way. But on Monday, I did my homework, I went to Westmoreland County Court where the eleven Norwood candidates were given their three-minute presentations on showing their desires to serve on the school board up there. All the Westmoreland judges sat in the front, and they came in one by one, but they weren't able to hear each other's presentations. They, they had diverse credentials, PhDs, all kind of career stuff and experience, and some were just plain old citizens like me. What, what's, you know, who's to say what is a better criteria for the position, if it was your work experience or your education? But most interesting to me, and the takeaway was, the eleven people in their three minutes basically got up and told them who they were and what their vision was for the, for education, you know, here's what I'm going to do, like Bill and I are going to do here tonight. And it's an imperfect means of selections, but all these eleven people got up there and said the same thing at the end, the same common talking points that we hear every day at school board meetings. And I'm sure that I don't fall into that category. So, I'd like to take a moment just to contrast the appointment process versus the election process here at Southmoreland. It's probably safe to say I have more experience in the election business at all levels than everyone on the stage here put together. I say that only to value the opinion that I'm going to place here, that with Southmoreland elections, we yield perennially an eight-to-one or nine-to-one board majority of acceptable perks, of the people who are acceptable to the Southmoreland Educational Association. It is what it is, and I'm not complaining about that. But an appointment is an opportunity to either double down on the structural deficiency of elections or compensate by loosening the stranglehold of the central command. Considering that there will be an eight-one majority if I'm put on this board, it would be a sign of strength to loosen up, widen the gene pool, so to speak, and get so, oh my God, get some society that, anyhow, we want to just get rid of, or get rid of the political inbreeding. How much time?
Fifty seconds.
Well, I didn't plan that. All right, well, let's see. I don't pretend to know how to run a classroom, I don't pretend to be any teachers or parents, best friends, and, okay.
Mr. Porter's next.
Good evening. I also want to recognize Michael Benz for all the service he gave this school district. I was fortunate enough to work many of those years with Michael, and I always remember Michael for the one vote that he was one of five on a five-four vote back in June of 2005 on the backdrop of a large tax increase to move this school district into the 21st century by setting up the renovations. And without that vote, this building here that you're sitting in would not exist today. So, I always appreciated him for that vote. You have my resume, I'm not going to go into the resume, it's pretty self-explanatory. As of June of 2011, I retired from the school district. Over the last seven years, kind of kept in touch with the district through the newspaper articles and such, run into board members, talked to them, and during that time, I just assumed the district was running on all cylinders, running fine, and never gave it a second thought until about, I would say about six months ago. I would run into people, whether I was at the Y, whether it was at County Market, whether my wife and I were walking through town. It started happening that people would stop me and make the comments that, hey, the school district's in trouble, what's going on? And my response, I don't know what's going on, I, you know, I have no access to the information, and I really haven't paid attention. And so, you know, they would relay these rumors to me, and I just took them as rumors. And then till talking, I believe, to Mrs. Rhodes, that, yeah, there was, there are some financial problems, and the board was looking into invoking the Act One exceptions for the upcoming 1920 budget. And when then she relayed that to me, then, that more or less solidified in my mind that, yeah, there are problems, okay? So, even knowing that information, it really, in my mind, I was still not interested, because I have no venue to the school district, and I like, you know, it's not like I was the business manager anymore. So, when Michael resigned, I started contemplating this would be the venue. And what's appealing to me on this venue is, it's only for one year. I'm willing to commit for one year. I'm not willing to go through an election and commit for four years. One year is very appealing. And so, if you're considering me, and if you're seriously considering me to be appointed, there are needs and wants that I will want upfront, and those are, I will want all the PDE 2028 budgets from 2011-12 to the present, I want all PDE 2057 AFR's annual financial reports from 11-12 to the present, I will want all PDE 2079s, the audit reports from 11-12 to the present. And the reason I'm requesting these reports are, and I know, if I'm sitting here, I know Jim's going to give us a 1920 budget, but that's not good enough. Budgets work off a previous budget. And I'm a detailed person, I'm a number cruncher, and so, I need to go, my base year will be 10-11, which was my last year, I know where the school district stood, I want to analyze numbers, form a pattern, I need to follow that pattern to see where the district started losing money, so I can make recommendations to rectify, to help rectify the situation, if you want me on board. Five minutes up, Amy's? Okay.
Take a second, it is now.
Thank you.
Mr. McLeod.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I have no school board experience, no political experience at all. I'm a member of your community, I was born in Mount Pleasant, Pennsylvania, I went to Conneville High School, graduated in 95. I'm a registered nurse, husband of two, married a local girl, Jane Ansel, who lives right outside of town. I hear things, my kids come home from school and say this, or say that, or I coach sports and I hear, but I, you know what, enough hearing, I wanted to be involved. So, when a couple buddies reached out to me and said about the vacancy, I thought, maybe I can help, maybe I can give my opinion. I believe in winning at every level. I tell my kids, I tell the kids I coach, you can win in the morning when you brush your teeth. You can win every second, every minute, every hour, every day, which leads into weeks, months, and years, and builds the people that will be our community in the future. Focus on the positive. Win every moment of your life, and you will be a leader one day yourself. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so, may I ask for nominations? So, only requires one person, it doesn't require a second. So, any board member can nominate anybody of those three, it doesn't have to be all three, it's up to the board, it's up to the board to decide who wants to nominate whom.
It's up to the school board to decide now by placing in nomination a person or persons, each board member can nominate someone. When that process is done, there'd be a motion to close the nominations, and then, if the board wants to discuss or give support speeches, you could do that if you wanted to.
So, I'm going to ask for nominations. So, you're asking for nominations? Do we have any?
I nominate Bill Porter.
Nomination, Bill Porter. Any other nominations?
I nominate Mr. Porter.
Mr. McLeod? Any other nominations? Going to close? Call for a motion. Call for a motion to close for nominating? Yes. To make that motion. Mrs. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Voice vote? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
Okay, now you'll proceed to roll call vote with each member announcing their preference, their vote rather. Oh, I'm sorry, you can open it up for discussion or speeches in support.
Do you guys want to discuss, or are you ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
Everybody ready to vote? We're going to do a roll call with the board member stating the person they want.
They're voting for, yes.
Okay? Just say their name.
Mr. Al votes for?
Mr. McLeod.
Mr. Beistock votes for?
Mr. Porter.
Mr. Carson votes for?
Mr. McLeod.
Mr. Frye votes for?
Mr. Porter.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mr. Porter.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mr. Porter.
Mrs. Smith votes for?
Mr. McLeod.
Mrs. Love votes for?
Mr. Porter.
You don't have five votes either way. You don't have five votes.
Yeah, we do.
Do you? I'm sorry. One, two, three, four, I'm sorry.
We have five votes.
You have five votes.
Mr. Porter.
Thank you. So, Mr. Porter is the announced candidate. He can be brought forward and sworn in.
Would you like to come forward, Mr. Porter? You can bring your stuff up here, and, or you can bring your stuff up.
Raise your right hand, Mr. Porter.
Board of Directors of the Southmoreland School District, both of the offices of school directors, raise your right hand, I, Mr. William Porter.
I am Mr. William Porter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
Defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will.
And I will.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of my office.
Duties of my office.
And that I will. Congratulations, Mr. Porter.
Mrs. Carson, have him subscribe to the oath and writing now. Peggy, have him sign his name to the.
Yeah, I will.
Voting item, MOU, ERIP.
It's the recommendation of the administration, and highly recommended by the solicitor, that you approve a memorandum of understanding with the Southmoreland Education Association as per the documents on your Chromebooks, which you can't read, so I'm going to read it. Whereas Representative, Southmoreland, SEA have met, discussed, and negotiated concerning an early retirement incentive plan for teachers, 2019, herein after the ERI or the plan, and the plan in the form attached herein to incorporated by reference has been approved by Southmoreland's school board in the form of notice of retirement and waiver, is offered by Southmoreland to effectuate participation in the plan by an eligible retiree. Therefore, is hereby understood and agreed by the parties as follows. Number one, the plan is attached here to and incorporated by reference. Number two, Southmoreland School District agrees that, Southmoreland Education Association agrees that the plan may be offered to its members subject to the following. Neither the language of the plan, or the notice of retirement and waiver, or anything herein or elsewhere, A, shall prevent SEA and its members utilizing the grievance and arbitration procedure of the current collective bargaining agreement between Southmoreland and SEA in the event that Southmoreland fails to pay an eligible participant who qualifies for the plan according to the terms of the plan and timely completes and submits the signed notice of retirement and waiver, if the plan becomes effective according to the terms of Section 2B of the plan, or in the event that Southmoreland fails to follow the terms of the plan, and it is agreed that the violation of such would be subject to grievance arbitration pursuant to the current collective bargaining agreement. So, just to briefly digress and explain, this is to make it perfectly clear, as there was either a perceived or unintended ambiguity in the language that we previously put into the waiver, that it was not the intent, and you are not depriving any member who is qualified to participate and wants to retire from exercising their rights to grievance and arbitration if you didn't pay them, or if someone truly did qualify and you said they didn't. Number B, neither the language of the plan or the notice shall prevent a retiree under the plan from collecting the balance of his or her wages, defer compensation for sick days, and healthcare coverage and benefits earned by the retiree under the terms of the current collective bargaining agreement through the end of the 2018-2019 school year, and even though the money does not become payable and the health insurance coverages are not provided until and through July and August 2019, and it is agreed that violation of such words, of such would be subject to grievance arbitration pursuant to the current collective bargaining agreement. This memorandum of understanding shall become effective upon approval of Southmoreland School Board at a public meeting in January 2019. And so, subsection B is merely that they're retiring at the end of June. Under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, they're still entitled to be paid for the 18-19 year to finish up the pays that they've already earned through July and August. So, you agree, you're still going to pay them, and they're entitled to their insurance coverages through to participate and wants to retire from exercising their rights to grievance and arbitration if you didn't pay them. Or if someone truly did qualify and you said they didn't. Number B, neither the language of the plan or the notice shall prevent retiree under the plan from collecting the balance of his or her wages, defer compensation for sick days, and healthcare coverage and benefits earned by the retiree under the terms of the current collective bargaining agreement through the end of the 2018-2019 school year. And even though the money does not become payable and the health insurance coverages are not provided until and through July and August 2019. And it is agreed that violation of such words, of such would be subject to grievance arbitration pursuant to the current collective bargaining agreement. This memorandum of understanding shall become effective upon approval of Southmoreland School Board at a public meeting in January 2019. And so subsection B is merely that they're retiring at the end of June. Under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, they're still entitled to be paid for the 18-19 year to finish up the pays that they've already earned through July and August. So you agree, you're still going to pay them. And they're entitled to their insurance coverages through July and August. And if you didn't pay them, which would be improper and illegal, they would have a choice. They could sue you or they could use grievance arbitration and the union could represent, you know, all of them in one group rather than forcing them to file individual lawsuits. So this is meant to assuage any concerns that any prospective retiree may have, that there was, you know, any intent or language that would create any, anything that would deprive them of those protections, which I assure you, it was not. But this is to make it crystal clear because everybody's anxious to move forward with this. It's my understanding after speaking with the president of the union and Mr. Masha that they were having a big meeting this afternoon in order to have the plan explained to them and meet with representatives of the people who supplied the 403B so that they would be fully informed and able to make a decision. So I highly recommend to you that you approve this so that the process could move forward and so that we could get to a determination within the time period of the plan, how many people are applying.
Wait, I need a motion. You need a motion first to debate. I mean to approve. Motion first and second.
I need a motion to approve the.
That was not for that. Go ahead.
The MOU. I'll make that motion. Mrs. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Mr. Frye?
Yes, it's a roll.
Roll call?
Is there any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a discussion?
At this point, should we be telling what the stipulations are of how many have to go, et cetera, et cetera?
That's already in the plan.
Yeah, but I don't know that if I'm voting on this.
It was voted on.
It was already voted on.
Six.
Six.
Have to be at least six.
That was voted on in December.
All the stipulations?
Yes.
Were voted on?
Yeah.
Yes.
We did that in December.
Did I miss that meeting?
No. No.
Well, I can. Well, that's my problem.
You voted yes.
Oh, I know I did, yeah.
Yeah, we were all stunned.
What I'm trying to say is, so the public knows what we're voting on. I mean, I know what we're voting on.
It's, yeah.
But I, what I, the whole point of my question is to show the transparency of what we're voting on. I mean, we have approved it and yes, I did approve it.
Publicly.
But the public doesn't know what we're voting on. Should they be told?
No, they already know that the plan is publicly voted. And I don't mean to be, you know, hiding anything. The plan is if an eligible retiree, which would be 15 years of, I have to do this from memory now because I don't have it in front of me, 15 years of PESR service and 15 years of Southmoreland service can apply by timely submitting their application. And the, they would be, if there are at least six, the plan moves forward and each eligible retiree would be entitled to $14,000 per year payable into a 403B plan. There's no discretion. It has to go into the plan. When they then take the money out of the plan is their business and their tax consequences. They have to maintain eligibility by continuing their employment through the 2018-2019 school year. And if there would not be six, the school board would have to decide whether or not they wanted to accept a fewer number. If they decided if there were not six and they did not want to accept that, then all of those folks could withdraw their notices if they wanted to. Or if they still wanted to retire, they could, but they would not get the benefits of this plan. They would get whatever they're entitled to only under the collective bargaining agreement. Under the plan, they get what's in the plan plus those sick days and a couple of other things that are in the collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah, that was what I wanted to hear in a meeting, in this forum. So you.
I just did it, okay.
And all potential candidates must submit that intent before January 31st. And then they have, they have seven days after that to rescind it, but we're looking for January 31st to be the deadline for that submission.
What is the minimum number?
Six.
Six. That's all.
It's by January 31st.
Yes, by January.
Not before, but by.
Any more discussion?
I want to be sure to see if it's working. I was going. I can't either. All right, we've gone up further discussion. Roll call?
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Passed because I haven't had time to examine only to really determine what the savings would be, so I don't want to commit.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes. Campbell, Coke Tax Assessment Appeal.
Be it resolved that the solicitor is authorized and directed to attend the hearing for the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Appeals of Westmoreland County and report back to the school board on tax exempt property, tax map number 30-02-02-0-137, Campbell, Cole and Coke Foundation. Do I have a motion? Mr. Beistel, second?
Second.
Mrs. Rhodes, discussion? Not that he can say much.
Do you want me to direct the comment?
Is there? How much money's involved, Dave?
There is, at this point, only one year at issue. The issue is whether or not it is a tax exempt property. The assessment is roughly $25,000. The amount of the current year's taxes for the school district would be $1,800. There is the, I can't say that there's a potential for going backwards in time, although the thought has crossed my mind by making a different kind of challenge, but I think the time for that may have passed. The issue is that the property is just not being used, let alone being used for its tax exempt purpose. The assessor's office sent out someone to investigate and there was no activity. So the burden was upon a tax exempt person or entity to prove at the hearing that they are functioning. That's all I know. This is for the building that would be commonly known in the community as the former Greystone Manor, across from the Presbyterian Church.
Okay.
Which would fall with the somewhat poorly maintained exterior.
Yeah, I was here when they requested tax exemption. Okay.
So we're just voting, or we're voting to send you to go to our hearing.
And normally, because the amount of the assessment is less than what my usual marching orders are to go and automatically attend, I did not want to do that without bringing this to you.
All right, any more discussion? In that case, roll call?
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Carson? Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries. Nine.
Okay. Girls' basketball tournament. The board is asked to consider the approval retroactive of an overnight trip for the girls' basketball team to travel to Riverside High School in Cranberry, PA over the Christmas break. Retroactive. It was inadvertently missed, so. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we're going to get it, right?
What's that?
It's already.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Carson? All, roll call?
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
All members voting yes.
You're adjourning from the special voting meeting and going to the regular planning meeting.
Motion to adjourn our special voting meeting?
You could have the opportunity.
In the next meeting. We're just adjourning our special voting meeting now to go into our planning session.
Do we have to change chairs or anything?
No. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Now we need a motion to. Now we need a. Well, I need, I need a motion to convene the planning session.
It's your move.
Mr. Polakowski, second. Mrs. Rhodes, all in favor? Aye. Do we have to do roll call? Roll call?
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes. Citizens' comments? Hearing none. General check fund summary. The board will be asked to consider the approval of the December 2018 general fund check summary. And then just move on to the. Do we have any discussion on that?
Okay. Mr. Mario just whispered in my ear that we missed including for next, for the approval of the minutes at the next meeting on the 17th. So where do I put those?
That would be right before the checks on the first thing.
So next, we're going to ask, we'll be asking for approval of the minutes for the December 17th, 2018 meeting. Voting meeting.
December 3rd and December, I forgot what date it was.
I don't think the December 17th we're posted yet on the board.
I know something they were.
No.
So it'd be just December 3rd.
And 13th, so December 3rd, 2018 minutes. The general fund board operating summary report. The board will be asked to consider the approval of the December 2018 general fund board operating summary report. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. Board reports will be given at the voting meeting.
Can I, can I ask that several of our staff come forward and, Mr. Swink, can you give a brief description of the Safe to Say program that worked?
We are starting a program, actually goes live on Monday, January 14th. It's called the Safe to Say. I think Mr. Kiefer had passed out some information that today Mr. Masha put out for the teachers all to review it because starting, I think Tuesday, we're going to train our students on, in the middle school and Thursday, we're going to do the high school. But some of the information is, what it is, is basically an anonymous tip line that the state mandated in Act 44 that we have, we actually have about a seven-person team here in this district. It's anywhere from three to seven people. It's all an anonymous tip that a student, if they see anything, and they'll be trained and that's what the training will be about, when they recognize something that they feel that someone should know about, you know, from suicides to bullying to whatever it may be, it's going to be a way for them to put it out for the district. And there's a certain, there's a whole like steps process and I think Greg, you can go over, you can see there's a whole step to what it does. They can anonymously put it in their phones. There's an app. It'll go up to a triage of people. They'll look at it and decide whether it's life-threatening or non-life-threatening or whatever it may be. And at that point, they'll make a decision and they'll send it out either to law enforcement or to the team here in the district and we will act on it. But I'll let Greg go over a little bit of some of the stuff that goes on. If you have the paper, you can follow it. But this will start live for this district Tuesday, January 15th.
All right, I'm going to make you smile here for a minute. So we already have an anonymous app system on our website and it's called, if I don't pronounce it right, Spereo. So, Spereo? Sprig, okay. Anyway, that I believe cost the district approximately almost three grand. So this, this is actually being paid, paid by the state and the attorney general's office is in control of the whole program. So what's, what's, what this does though is it's basically like calling, the, the app goes, the app goes to either, you can do it by the app, the website, or actually a telephone call. And it actually goes to a triage crisis center, which is controlled by the attorney general's office in Harrisburg. From there, the tip will then go, if it's a life-threatening tip or a tip of violence, it actually goes to, in our case, Westmoreland County 911. And 911 will then dispatch police or emergency personnel, whoever's necessary. And also, at the same time, our, our Southmoreland School District team will be notified. And the team consists of myself, Charlie, Tracy, Raquel, Mr. Masha, I miss anybody, and Mr. Clark, and Mr. Krawcheck. So that, it's a team of seven. So that, that, those tips will come to us. The life-threatening tips will be 24/7. So they suspect that we won't get many tips like that, but in emergency situations, I mean, we could, we could end up getting tips, you know, during the weekend, middle of the night. So that's why there's so many of us on that team. If we have to provide information to law enforcement or emergency personnel, we'll be able to access the school system and give them, give them student information if needed. Basically, I also gave you a graph. It's kind of self-explanatory from where the, where the crisis center tip goes, whether it's a life safety tip. And then if it's a non-life safety tip, those tips are only given to us. We will get the tip basically Monday, 6:00 p., 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So if it's a non-life threatening tip, that could be a tip of student using alcohol, a bullying tip, something that's not life-threatening, that there's no police involvement needed. Is there any questions on the Safe to Say? Because I have, I have a couple, I have a couple more things.
It is, it is completely anonymous too. I don't know if we said that. Whoever puts in the tip, it's completely anonymous and you can only uncover it by an attorney general with a court order, which is very tough. So I mean, this part of it is to give the student to feel that, you know, if there's something that they won't, you know, it's not like it can be, hopefully, you know, it's not something that turns into, you know. But they have access, the one thing about it, every school in Pennsylvania, every school district's going to be hooked up and you can actually, and that's. And that's the thing we're looking at. You can pick any school out. So, anybody that hears anything about Southmoreland outside in the district could actually send a tip to us, is the way it sounds like it's going to work. And it's new, believe me. And we're all kind of working through it in all the districts. Westmoreland, we actually set up a team where all the leads, and Greg and myself, we go each month and try to go over and make sure that we're all on the same page, and everybody knows what we're doing. But the biggest thing is, with it being live, you know, we could actually get tips starting Monday, from what we understand, through the PA with the system. So, that's why we want to get our kids trained and move forward with the mandate and hopefully take care of what we got to do.
Is there possible ramifications of someone falsifying your report?
I'll address that. Yes, there is. And what we're told is... They've done this in other states, and the percentage of false reports is very, very low. But we're also told that the Safe to Say people basically own the rights to all that information, and it would take an act of Congress in order to get a search warrant or what we call subpoena to actually charge false reports. So, they're basically rolling dice when there's telling us that there's not going to be a lot of false reports.
But they also, you know, this tip line or that crisis center, they're supposedly go through... It's not like every tip. They actually can dialogue with whoever the tipster is, completely anonymous between them. So, they actually will talk to the person, whether it be the phone or the app or, you know, texting. So, they try to get as much information that way. So, obviously, I think that's one of the ways that they kind of hopefully, you know, be able to signal it out before they send it on. But again, like he said, it's very tough to uncover who does the tip. But again, that's going to be the job of that center, the crisis center, hopefully, before they send it off to us.
Is the contact from... Is the contact from 911 to the school district by landline, cellphone, or can it be either way?
It can be on... It can be on the app. It can... It most likely is going to be on the app. There's a dialogue that we have. We're administrators. We can log on, and actually, we can actually talk to the tipster also.
What I'm getting at is, if there is a power outage, does that prevent the warning getting through?
No. No, they... I mean, they will get a hold of us, like they said. It will be through the app, most likely through the app, through the website, or by telephone call. They will not stop until they get a hold of us.
Hey, one question thought of is... Is this going to mean that we're going to allow... Say they want to file in a... Or call in a tip. Are we going to be allowing kids to use cellphones in school if it's something that needs to be addressed at school right now? Because it's anonymous, and they don't want to go to the principal or whoever, is this going to propose a problem there? Or are they going to have to go to the computer lab? How do we do that? I mean, and I know, Greg, you don't know all the answers, but it's new. I think, in my personal opinion, I think it's a terrible, terrible idea because there's too many ways to false... Make false things, you know? And I know they haven't had a...
Well, 90... They've told us, this generation, as far as using... Most, 90% of the tips are going to come in by the app on the phone. They told us that outright.
Does that pose a problem for us? Because I don't know what our cellphone policy is now.
Well, we already have a current electronic usage policy, so that could online cause us to revisit.
And what about the people that don't have phone, don't have cellphone? And I know everyone would say, everyone has a cellphone. There's a lot of people that don't have any of that stuff. They don't have phone lines, they don't have cable, they don't have... They barely have running water. As a district, are they going to tell us we have to provide everybody with some type of way of the communicate?
A lot of the incidents that do occur on a normal basis are covered during a normal school day by our administrative staff and our counselors. So, hopefully, those situations, we can try to monitor as best as possible. Will there be cases where someone won't have access to technology? That could happen. We're hoping that we have a good enough rapport with our students that if there were an incident that occurred, they would feel confident and comfortable coming to one of our staff members and sharing that incident with us.
Okay. I mean, and the last thing is, can it... Can they, like, use it to report, like, mom's beating dad up, or dad's beating mom up? And is that something they can do as well, or is it just for something pertaining to school? They're, like, harming theirself.
Well, what will happen is, the crisis center in Harrisburg will have dialogue with the tipster, and he... I'm just saying, most likely, what will happen is that they will tell them to call their local 911 center.
They'll filter that stuff.
This is just for... This is just for school events, school incidents, students.
Okay.
We still have support services such as CYS that would also be involved.
I just didn't know if the kid would text that number and, hey, my dad's beating my mom up, my brother up. They can do it, and it'll get to the right authorities. And it's anonymous. I don't know who reported it. I think it's a pretty nice idea in that way.
We are going to make all this information on the public board docs. So, if you want to look at it, it'll be on public board docs.
Any... I have two more things. Sorry. Here, this will make us all smile. As you recall, about two months ago, we applied for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grant. As you recall, Part A was $25,000, and then Part B was pending up to $100,000. Well, we just received the word that we were granted the $25,000, and we're going to use that $25,000 with some of the extra money from possible... For protection for our door locking systems, to standardize them throughout the district. Basically, everybody knows that as a FLOP system. We had an old quote for approximately... The old quote was $35,000. We're currently getting that updated as we speak. So, hopefully, we have that done by this spring. The Part B grant is still pending, and we'll know about that grant, I'm told, by the end of February. And also, when it comes to safety and security, I'd like to set up a future date for our Safety and Security Committee. We want to talk about getting the drug dogs at the middle school and the high school. We want to talk about future equipment purchases, such as raincoats, parkas for security officers and personnel. The last home... That last home game we had, it rained the whole game, and I felt really bad for the guys. They didn't have the proper equipment. They all were out there in the rain for three hours, and they got soaked and went cold. I mean, that's just not... That's just not necessary. We want to talk about maybe additional officers or additional officer... I got some things in works where we can maybe actually save some money on some things that we do, maybe not staffing the events as concentrated with the unarmed officers as we do, and getting some other guys in there. We also want to talk about maybe the metal detectors here in the near future. And like I said, I just want to let everybody know where we're at at this point. Any questions when it comes to safety and security? All right, thank you.
Hold on now. I just like to piggyback on that a little bit, just so the public record. We are... I am going to be helping do it in a second annual cost of protection, maybe renaming it. Who knows? But we're definitely... I'm definitely doing that. It'll be before the school year's out to help offset some of these costs that Mr. Kiefer's talking about. And I think everything else is going pretty well, so I don't have anything else to report. That's it.
Mrs. Kapunk, if you please.
Well, following in Greg's footsteps, I have some positive news to share with the board as well. In December, before the holidays, a couple of generous donations were made to help children's lunch accounts that were in arrears. One generous donation was for $461.14. Reason being, they called and asked how much was a certain amount, and that's the amount we gave them, and a very generous person wrote a check. We also received a very nice check, which I thought was a true meaning of the Christmas spirit. Little girl came into the elementary school line and said her family wanted to give money to help, you know, another family out. So, I thought that was a great lesson for the parent and the family to learn at the holidays. We also received another donation. So, these three donations totaled $506.14, which was very nice. In addition, over the holidays, PRFSD, which is the Pittsburgh Regional Food Service Director's Organization that I belong to, they solicit suggestions for districts who run backpack programs, which we do. They ask people to submit their districts, and I submitted ours. And the organization that distributes our backpacks received $250. So, some good news to share with everybody. Thank you.
Okay, we've got more good news. The EITC funds from Mid Penn Bank granted us $15,000 to be used in one of the three areas to enhance student leadership, career exploration, and/or literacy development. So, that's another nice thing we have. All right, we're moving on. Okay, moving on. The 2019-2020 school calendar will be asked to consider the approval of that. The board... Is there any discussion on that? The board will be asked to consider the approval of the June 30th, 2018 Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center audited financial statement. Is there any discussion on that? Jason, do you have anything to say on that? And then, we're going to adjourn to executive session for personnel. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
I had something on the board.
No? Okay.
Hey, I wanted to ask for the board members to consider... I was at the home basketball game the other night and had some concerns or some complaints, I guess. I'd like to see if we could consider allowing food and beverage in the gymnasium during basketball events. I think we're missing... I think whoever's benefiting from that's missing out on revenue opportunities, and I just can't wrap my head around why we don't allow it in there. I know there's a lot of schools that don't allow it, but people aren't supporting the concession stand because they can't jam a bag of popcorn down fast enough to get in there before the second half starts. And, you know, maybe the biggest thing is the cleaning of it, but I think we have faculty or staff to do that, to clean up. And I was a little bit, you know, concerned as to why we didn't have a 50/50 going off during that game. I had asked one of the coaches, and they said, "We just don't get participation by the parents that do so." It's not... Not a lot of money that comes in the door through the 50/50, but if it's $50 a game, you know, if it's $1,000 a year, and it's going to buy something, it's a couple jerseys. But my biggest concern, you know, thing is, I'd like to see us consider wa... Lifting that food and beverage in the gym. I think it would help everybody involved. And so, that's all I got on that right now.
I have a... For executive session, I wanted to give you a piece of information about our real estate purchase.
Were you in the executive session? Or I could have started tonight's meeting.
Information session. On the motion to adjourn to executive session.
I think it's required on executive. So, I try and act to disclose.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This isn't going to be much, right? This won't be much, right?